So let's go ahead and call our Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. There we go. Something's going on with my screen there. Just about fixed. All right, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pete told.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon. Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Plenum.
Here. Per usual, we'll start with a quick review of tonight's agenda. I'll call for any changes to the agenda. And we'll then go to public comment. That will be the time for members of the public to participate. Please note, there are opportunities to provide public comment on House Bill 2001 Code Amendment and the full faith and credit obligations and ordinance 2110 later in the agenda. After that, we'll have response to the previous public comments from the previous meeting. I don't believe there are any tonight. Is that correct? Yeah, none. We'll then go to the consent agenda. On there tonight is our city council meeting minutes from April 5th, as well as board governance and structure amendments under resolutions. We have Resolution 2021-06, authorizing full faith and credit obligations. Under old business tonight, we have a public hearing on that HB 2001 Code Amendment. We have ordinance 2021-10. Under new business, propose pool reopening task force, guaranteed maximum price proposal for basin info on the infiltration rehabilitation project, as well as city manager authority delegation for existing wastewater treatment plant improvements project. We'll then go to a report from our city manager, and then we'll have our committee and council reports, and then we'll adjourn for the evening. Is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Again, please note that this is opportunities to provide public comments on HB 2001 Code Amendments, full faith and credit obligations, so as ordinance 2110 later in the agenda. Council now welcomes your comments on all other topics at this time. There's instructions on our agenda, but if you're participating online, please feel free to click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. You'll be provided three minutes by our city recorder Jeff, and he'll kind of count down and give you a warning. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. Jeff, take us away.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just take a moment and look for any raised hands. Okay, Mayor, I believe we have Allison Clu. You should be able to unmute yourself now, and please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when there are about 20 seconds remaining. Welcome.
Wonderful. Can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, hello, welcome.
Hi, so my name is Allison Clu. I'm a resident here in Sandy and a co-organizer of March 20th Pride Event Have a Gay Day, and I'm also submitting these comments in my address via the city recorder, so thank you for that option. I'd like to start by addressing some recent statements about rallies in the First Amendment. While it is certainly true that our government can't and shouldn't abridge freedom of speech, our local officials are not obliged to validate all stances or speakers either. You have a choice as individuals and a body of elected officials to steer the conversation and show our community values. And lately, that's looked like some lukewarm statements in favor of neutrality and condemning extremists on both sides. I just want to say that neutrality in the face of a culture war narrative misses the fact that certain stances can cultivate a community that is not only unwelcoming, it can be dangerous for some people. No one is born belonging to a political party, but there are gay and trans people born in rural areas, and people of color born in small towns who live here until they make a decision of, is it safe enough and can I be my open self and not face threats? I'd like, or I'd be happy to provide further details about the Proud Boy presence on March 20th, including my own interaction with a rather aggressive group of them from out of town walking through our event. However, with limited time, I would just like to go in the record on why events like Have a Gay Day are good for Sandy and not just an abstract side and a debate. So we had Sandy locals organizing, speaking, fundraising, and volunteering in multiple capacities, including our own safety team. Besides, our guests from other communities on Mount Hood in the greater Clackamas County, we had a huge showing of Sandy attendees, families, business owners, retirees, students, and teachers. We had longtime residents, new residents, and former residents all speaking to the atmosphere of Sandy. What works and what doesn't work when we're making a livable and welcoming space for people and marginalized groups. Our messaging, sorry. Our messaging and outreach both before and during the event focused on centering these local stories rather than any confrontation with the prayer rally. Members of our safety team were even praised by Sandy police officers for de-escalating tense situations. Our focus was always safety, celebration, and listening to our local voices. New stories focused on dueling sidewalk signs, but the real work was happening in the parking lot behind City Hall where we had a community working together to show its absolute best. Our event was a success for Sandy as a whole. We had enormously positive feedback, including from out of town guests who said that they felt more welcome than they had at pride events in larger cities. So Sandy has the incredible potential to be a leader, to stand up for its people, and its legacy is a great small town. Where everyone is welcome in action and not just words, and I really hope to see more of you at future events. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Allison, for your public testimony this evening, and I know we all very much appreciate your time and participation in our process.
Okay, Mayor, so I'll just look for any other raised hands. There's a button at the bottom of your screen, or if you're on the phone, you can dial star nine.
Yep, remember star nine on the phone or the raised hand button. Thank you.
Mayor, I do not see any other raised hands.
All right, great. Thank you so much, and thank you again, Allison, for participating tonight. With that, we'll move forward to our consent agenda. If there's no discussion on tonight's consent agenda, we'll look for a motion.
I have a little correction to the meeting notes.
Okay.
This, under the, this mention of a grant, the Recreation Trail Grant Letters of Intent. It's the letters of intent that's due by the end of April, not the grant itself.
Okay, so with any motion, let's go ahead and just recognize Counselor Walker's amendment.
I move that we accept the consent agenda with the notations from Counselor Walker included.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, thumbs down, or a nay? Motion carries. All right, moving forward into resolutions, Resolution authorizing full faith and credit obligations. Tyler? Or I'm assuming it's you, Tyler?
Me, I just can't get myself unmuted fast enough, sorry. Good evening, Council. You may recall that two weeks ago, we met to discuss the Full Faith and Credit Obligation Series 2021 to provide financing for some capital improvement projects, specifically the LED streetlight conversion, the Bell Street 360 second extension, and sewer lateral replacements. That meeting on April 5th was meant to inform you of kind of the upcoming process and steps for that issuance of the Full Faith and Credit Obligation. Answer any questions you had at that time, and sort of get the group prepared for next steps. And so here we are this evening with Resolution 2021-06 to authorize the Full Faith and Credit Obligations. Essentially, with the adoption of this resolution, you will be allowing staff to enter into a financing agreement not to exceed $8.5 million. Designate authorized representatives, which include Jordan Wheeler and myself to act on behalf of the city, as well as special counsel, which is Murph Sero and Shannon, who have used numerous times in the past as our bond counsel, and then some other miscellaneous related matters that sort of fall under the general umbrella of the Full Faith and Credit Obligation issuance. There haven't been really any items to note that are material as far as changes since we last spoke two weeks ago. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the overall projects or financing process. Otherwise, that sort of concludes the brief staff report from from this item this evening.
And so why don't we, we've talked about taking public testimony for this. Why don't we go ahead and do that at this time before we get into too much council discussion? And so we'll, I'll go ahead and kind of quickly go through the instructions again. And so if you're participating here online, please feel free to click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. You'll be provided three minutes, and please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Mayor, I'll just take a moment to look for any raised hands. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right, so I'm open for discussion or emotion. It seemed too much discussion.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2021-06.
Is there a second? All right, I see a motion by Counselor Pete told and a second by Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a nay or a thumbs down? Motion carries.
Looking forward to getting these projects started.
Yeah, thank you, Tyler. Thank you for your work and your presentation. With the next item is we will be moving into a public hearing. One second. All right, so yep, we do have an opportunity for public testimony that will occur after the staff report concludes. When the public testimony period begins, I think we should be good at it tonight, but just a reminder to click the raised hand button at the appropriate time if you're online or star nine if you're on via telephone. This hearing has been continued from our March 15th, 2021 council meeting. The purpose of tonight's meeting is a discussion is to gather further public input and consider discretionary modifications to the development code. Ordinance passage is not expected at this meeting. So with that, I will now open the public hearing for State Land Use Number 20-032 DCA. It is 7/19 on April 19th. I will call for any extensions from the hearing body. Seeing none. Is there any conflicts of interest? All right, Emily, you're up.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen. All right, so tonight we're continuing our discussion about House Bill 2001 Code Amendments. This is about 10 different chapters in the code. And last time I went over all of the specific changes. We're not going to do that tonight since we already did that, and it's in the packet from, from last meeting. What I really wanted to focus on tonight are the actual discretionary discussion topics. So what we're wanting to do is to take public testimony and then have, have you guys provide staff with feedback on seven different discretionary items so that we can come back next month with revised code language based on those discretionary items. And again, we need to be passing these code changes by June, by the end of June, otherwise the, the state's model code will go into effect July 1st. So my plan was to go through each of the seven discussion topics and actually pause after each one and have a discussion so that we can get feedback. But I'm now wondering, since we are taking public testimony again, if it would make more sense to do the public testimony first, so we're not kind of stopping and starting. Kind of whatever you guys prefer.
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
That's me.
So let's just maybe pause here, have public testimony, and then we can dive into each of the seven topics, and I'll give a brief explanation and then kind of unshare my screen, and we can have a discussion, and then some of them will be brief, hopefully, and others might take longer, so.
Perfect, thank you, Emily.
Question, Emily, did this get put out on the city government website? Or on the newsletter? Because I didn't see it on the city government website, but I was wondering if it went out on the newsletter.
I'll defer.
So Counselor Walker, I don't, I don't think we had a specific article about this in the newsletter this time, but there was. Honestly, let me go back and take a look. I know that we have put some things out about it. I don't want to answer incorrectly, but let me go ahead and and check. We have, we have been getting the word out about it, but I don't want to, I don't want to give you incorrect information.
Okay, so with that, let's go ahead and proceed with public testimony. Guidelines for those who wish to speak, please do try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called four and three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait for the appropriate time to be recognized. I will now call for testimony in favor of the proposal. Just a reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record, and you'll be provided three minutes.
Hey Mayor, I'll just take a look for any raised hands. And I do not see any raised hands, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. I will now call on testimony against the proposal.
And I do not see any raised hands.
All right, then I'll call on the third testimony, which may be where a lot of people might be. Call for neutral testimony. General comments, neither for nor against the proposal. Just a reminder, state your name and mailing address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hey Mayor, I do not see any raised hands tonight.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. Emily, you're back.
All right, so I'll share my screen and we'll get started with the first discussion topic. So as I mentioned, there's seven different things we wanted to talk about tonight. These, these were all mentioned at the last meeting. There's nothing new. We just want to dwell on each of them and get some consensus so that we know what to do moving forward, how to, how to amend the code. So the first one is duplex and an ADU on the same lot. So House Bill 2001 requires a city to allow, or sorry, House Bill 2001 does not require a city to allow both a duplex and an ADU on the same lot, but a city can choose to allow both. Right now, our definition in Chapter 1710 of an accessory dwelling unit is not 100% clear in relation to what Chapter 1774, which is the accessory development chapter, says regarding whether an ADU and a duplex are allowed on the same lot. So we do need to update that definition one way or another to clarify it. If council does decide to allow an ADU and a duplex on the same lot, then we also recommend that we update the definition of building types, the common multifamily dwelling, to clarify that an ADU and a duplex on the same lot would not be considered multifamily in terms of the multifamily design standards, which are more for like apartment buildings. So the Planning Commission recommended allowing a duplex and an ADU on the same lot. And the, the definition of an ADU in Chapter 1710 was updated accordingly, and that's in your packet tonight. We did receive preliminary feedback via email from Counselor Walker that she's not in favor of allowing a duplex and an ADU on the same lot. So this is the first topic, is whether you want to allow a duplex and an ADU on the same lot.
So Emily, can we just delve into each of these as we take them up? Is that kind of what you were thinking?
Yeah, so I don't know if you want me to stop sharing my screen and can have the discussion, or I can leave this up.
Maybe, maybe keep, keep it on, keep it on, and then I'm just going to ask counselors to please do use the raised hand function, as it'll make it easier for me to guide the conversation. I see Counselor Hokinson first. I am just going to quickly say so we can move along where I'm at. I'm with Counselor Walker on this. All right, Counselor Hokinson, you're up.
Thanks. Thank you, Emily, for organizing the topics this way. I think this is going to be very effective. I would like to propose that as we move through these, that perhaps we take a thumb, we ask for clarifying questions if we have questions about the topic, and then we focus our conversation, our questions about, you know, I don't understand. But I think we should do a quick thumbs up, thumbs down on these things to see if we need to discuss them.
I agree. So if we're going to do that, then let's do remove the screen, please. So just generally, and then I am, don't worry, Counselor Pete told, we're going to allow you guys your, your moment here. But that said, I am curious if we do what Dawn suggested where it lands. So just quick, just this isn't about, this quick kind of, are we for allowing ADUs with duplexes on the same lot or not? If you're for it, thumbs up. If you're against it, thumbs down. All right, Counselor Exner, change your mind.
No, I'm going to stay up.
Okay, change your mind.
Well, I understand.
You're up, so I mean, if you, if you, if you have some feelings about it, let's go.
Oh, I thought this was going to be the final vote there, but without.
No, no, not a final vote.
Okay, without too much discussion, I can see circumstances where we might have more than enough room on a larger lots to include ADA's, ADU, excuse me, and the duplex situation. Certainly on the smaller lots, I'm going to buy a house and my next door neighbor in a very small lot situation just barely fits a duplex and an ADU into the same location. Could really cause some grief, but some of the larger lots, I think there should be some opportunities to do that, and that's the reason why I would be an advocate for both, but only at the larger lot size. And maybe we could talk about quarter acre, third of an acre and larger. We have some larger lots that would be able to deal with those kind of situations. Otherwise, there would be no flexibility as we get to those larger locations, and that's the reason why.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that. Counselor Hokinson?
I just countered that by suggesting that if we want to make, number one, we've limited our changes to what we have to make right now, and number two is that we explore that in the comp plan update. If we want to change the nature of these larger lots, that we address it in the comp plan rather than open up a potential window for now.
Counselor Walker?
I want to just thank Emily for this staff report in the PowerPoint. It was excellent, really easy to understand our decisions based on this. One of the things I am a little bit not clear on is, like, so in this, Carl just raised a good point. So in that situation, is that something that they could go after a variance for to ask for that or not? And kind of similar to these other issues too. Are those things that if we say no, they cannot go to a request a variance or what? Can you clarify for us?
Um, I'll let Kelly chime in too, but my understanding of the way our code is written is that we have a special variance procedure that virtually lets an applicant ask for anything. So my guess is that they could come through and ask for a special variance if we say no duplex and ADU on the same lot. I don't know if Kelly has more.
Yeah, Kelly, yeah, that's correct. The only thing in the code that I know of that you cannot request a special variance for is to go below the minimum density in a zone, which I, I would never anticipate seeing that proposed anyways, but
seen one of those yet.
Yeah, but that is the only thing, and I think that's something in state statute or a court decision. Chris would be able to explain that if you wanted more information on that. But otherwise, everything in the code could be a special variance or an adjustment, correct? Or a deviation if it's in 1790.
Counselor Walker, just a reminder, put your hand down. And so Counselor Exner, I'm just going to go back at you real quick. The way I view this is I, I think that was just spelled out at, you know, at least there's an avenue, right, for variances and stuff to get it in front of council if, if there is a special project that calls for it. Do we feel like we're kind of at enough consensus that we can move on to the next issue?
As long as there's look like some variance opportunity and a pathway, so I'm, I'd be very able to, to change my mind.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that, sir. Emily, why don't we take us on to the next topic?
All right. Okay, so the next topic is looking at detached and attached duplexes, and then also other types of mill housing. So I just included a few examples here. These are in the last presentation as well, just to show a visual of the detached versus attached duplexes. The middle graphic there is sort of the missing middle housing, which is what all of this type of housing is trying to address. So it's anything from duplexes to like multiplexes. And a couple of the more common ones on the bottom are, you know, triplexes, fourplexes, or cottage clusters. Larger cities in Oregon are being required to allow these, the same way we're being required to allow a duplex on a single family lot. But as a medium city, we're only required to allow the duplex. So these are just other options. So the topic really is that, so House Bill 2001 requires cities to allow attached duplexes wherever detached, single family dwellings are allowed, but it's up to each city whether to also allow detached duplexes. Our existing code allows attached and detached duplexes where single family dwellings are allowed in all zones that allow them except for the single family residential zone. The proposed code amendments would allow duplexes outright in the single family residential zone in conformance with House Bill 2001, but we can decide whether to allow both detached and attached duplexes. We can also make the decision to allow additional middle housing options like triplexes, fourplexes, or cottage clusters, if you want. The Planning Commission recommended continuing to allow both attached and detached duplexes in zones that permit single family dwellings, but they didn't make a recommendation to allow additional middle housing options in zones that currently don't allow them. And we got preliminary feedback from Counselor Walker that she's not in favor of allowing detached duplexes in the SFR zone.
All right, please take this down. We'll have our discussion. I, I think the, I think the people of Sandy are also opposed to that, but let's go ahead and get into this. So how do we feel? Do you want to allow triplexes?
And attached.
And attached, detached, yep.
Quick question, so maybe I misunderstood before thumbs up or down. Are we talking about, it seemed like we were talking about two different things. Are we talking about detached and attached, or are we talking about all the other housing options outside of duplexes only?
Can we split them?
That's, that's what I would request, is that they be split, because I have different feelings about both.
This is Kelly, yeah. Counselor Sheldon, you're correct. I think it is two separate questions.
All right, so let's start with the first one, allowing detached. So I'm going to, let's say if you, I mean, how do I pose this question? I guess I'm
in favor of. Detached duplexes on SFRs.
Yeah, if you're, if you're for that, give me a thumbs up. If you're opposed, give me a thumbs down.
Yeah.
And that was for, that was for detached duplexes on a lot, okay.
Yeah, because duplexes are allowed. So basically, the question is, is do you want to allow them to be, you know, split in two, or they have to be part of the same unit?
Yeah, detached duplexes are allowed too, as well.
So for the people who are opposed, let's start with, let's do the hands, right? So Counselor Pete told.
Yeah, I guess I look at it as, I don't know, maybe I'm old fashioned on the definition of a duplex, or my understanding, before the last meeting, I didn't know there was such thing as a duplex that was detached. But in a way, it feels like, besides that it's the same lot owner that owns the lot, that it's a way of, when you're driving down the street, that it's just, now it's high density in that area, like you've just put into separate houses on that same lot. And, you know, there's no way of knowing that, you know, one landowner owns both those houses, and that's one city lot, and now it's a, it's a duplex in that aspect of things. And so I think it's just a way of kind of creating a much higher density area that was zoned for 7,500 square foot lots. And where a duplex is definitely visibly together, it can be seen as that, and it gives a little bit more of the side yards on each side of it and everything else that may come along with it, because of having to have that space in between it for fire ratings and everything else. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Sheldon. You were, you were, shoot, man, you were already unmuted.
Sorry, I'm running on not much sleep right now. Hey, so although I want to go on the record that I'm not for duplexes on single family residential lots, but that's out of, out of our control, so. So I'm going to kind of go back to a little bit about what Carl said earlier. The reason I would actually be for detached is I have a lot of concerns with this, with the, we'll talk about in a little bit with the parking. And the limited parking that's going to be there. And I could see some by detachment, that there's some possible designs that we could keep some of the cars off of our super narrow streets that we already have and allow them to be parked off the roadway. And just a little bit more creative design, since we're going to have to allow the double houses on there anyways, we might as well allow for some creativeness. That's my thoughts.
Some great points, sir. I appreciate it. So now I'm just trying to go off memory of order. So I think it's Counselor Hockinson's next, and then Walker, then Smallwood.
Thanks. I don't remember if I was next or not, but hey, I'm going to stand like a broken record on this. I actually like the idea of split duplexes properly cited. I think it's a great look. However, procedurally, I think the right time to explore that is part of the comp plan update. If we didn't have this house bill, that's when would we be talking about this naturally? So I think we should limit this effort to what we're, what we have to do and let the comp plan update roll through. And if we choose to make a broader change, we can do it at that point in time.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I think you guys have raised some really interesting thoughtful points, and I agree with some of them. The fact is, is that we already have, you know, a third of our, our residences are going to be multifamily. And 48% are already zoned for this middle housing. So we've got that. These small lots, you know, two small houses or, you know, small houses on a small lot. We've already kind of got that covered pretty well. And I understand the parking issue, but I think that the solution to that is kind of in that parking topic that we're going to be talking about. And, you know, for now, this just, I think the concern that I have with this is, first of all, like Jeremy said, it just kind of looks more, more like small lots. But, but second of all, I think that the tendency will be for people to try to come in and then subdivide. You know, they, they kind of got two quote unquote houses on, on one lot, and they're going to want to come in and subdivide. There, I think there's some additional, you know, public, the sewer water and all that can kind of get a little bit confusing when you've kind of got this, these two separate lots. So for those reasons, I think I would tend to, and the definition, when I did, you know, looked up the definition in the dictionary about a duplex, it did say that it was attached housing. So yeah, that's kind of where I stand.
Thank you. Counselor Smallwood?
Well, I guess, you know, I'd be curious to hear some, why some other people are opposed to them. From a logical standpoint, I think that having two, two houses versus one. If I were living in one, I'd rather live in a detached one personally. You're not sharing a wall. And so, and then you go back to your fire rating. I would, I, I mean, I'd have to look at the fire code, but I'd like to think that your fire rating is better with two residents with a fire break between the two than sharing an adjacent wall. So, and I, I agree with Counselor Sheldon on the parking. We have, we have parking problems. I just think that we have a little more opportunity to be a little more dynamic by allowing to. I, I haven't heard a good reason yet from somebody to change my mind on why not. So.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it. Counselor Exner, know about a Kelly and try to get another thumbs up, down exercise.
Yeah, I have to agree with Rich and Lori about these things. The parking is certainly, I think, a little bit more flexible if you've got two buildings. I actually had a chance to sell a detached duplex here a while back, and the parking was much easier to negotiate with the different houses separated. I think you're going to get more observation. It may not be the bigger square inches of grass, but you're going to see grass between buildings rather than just around the outside. And it may be squished off to one side or the other if you have a larger building. So what, to me, I think that the view of a detached duplex is going to be a little easier on my eyes. With you guys, I don't think we should be putting duplexes on single family, but since we're here, and I think 2001 requires us to come up with a decision. I suspect that's what Kelly's going to say next. But I'm going to say I'm, I just don't see any reason why we would not put a detached duplexes on property as long as it fit.
Okay, so, okay, so as long as, and Counselor Walker, you're definitely in the queue. But as long as Kelly doesn't say anything completely earth shattering, which he's certainly able to. I, I will look to try to get to a thumbs up or down. That's one of those moments we've all discussed where you start to feel a bit of a consensus wrapping around something. And I just don't feel like we have to keep beating it up. Kelly, go ahead.
Two quick things. We would just need clarity on whether, if you decided to not allow detached duplexes, what zones? Because I heard SFR, that's an actual zone. So I didn't know if that was intended. The other thing I want to clarify is the code already allows this. So I understand what Counselor Hockinson's saying about waiting to the comp plan, but this is not one we can really wait to the comp plan. Because your code right now already says we allow detached duplexes and attached duplexes. So we just need direction one way or the other. That's all.
I mean, sorry, Kathleen, I am being, I think he wants a quick response to that. Yeah.
So I don't believe SFR allows a duplex at all today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. So, so what we would be doing with this change is allowing SFR to have a duplex. So the question on the table is, would it be attached or detached? That is a change that would be from today.
Right. Basically, though, we have to choose one. So that's what we got to do. Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that we're changing anything in the medium density that allows attached or detached. That, that can stay. It's just in the SFR. And the biggest reason that I wanted to, that I forgot to add in there is that my, my biggest reason is that, like a couple of you other have mentioned, I'm not thrilled about being forced to allow duplexes on SFR. And I feel like if we do allow it, and we have to, which we will, that there will be increased use of that option if we allow detached units than if we allowed, if we required attached units. So I think that's for me probably the biggest reason that I'm going to vote against having detached units. Because I think there would be fewer, fewer developers take, you know, taking up the option of, of attached duplexes on our SFR lots. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Pete Sol, now let's go to a vote.
Yeah, it's more of just a question though, on that, if they're detached, can you call them an ADU? You know, instead of, if you have an ADU limitation on it, can I just call it a duplex that is detached? And now I have a bigger unit on that lot? I guess that was just a question that might be coming up and then into more topics, but.
Do you want, do you want me to respond?
Sure, yeah, that was a question.
I mean, that is, that is something that's sort of confusing about this house bills essentially, it essentially almost eliminates ADUs because you can basically have two units on a lot. But the distinction is that our ADUs are limited in size, so they're smaller. And I believe the main, the main difference is that an ADU right now in terms of system development charges is treated more like an apartment unit, whereas a duplex is like two single family. So that I think the, the main thing is that the ADU has to be smaller. If you go with the duplex route, you can have two equal sized or, you know, whatever, two, two that are bigger than the ADU. But you'll be paying more SDCs too. I think that's the main difference. Kelly, do you know another?
There might be other, I mean, prior to, prior to January 1st, you could also limit the owner occupancy and different things, but that all went away on January 1st.
Okay, all right. So who's in favor of having them detached? Well, none of us are in favor of having duplexes, but if, as we're choosing one, detached versus attached, thumbs up for allowing detached. Jeremy, are you participating?
Sure, fine, yes.
All right. So, so now we're, okay, so five to two on that one. All right. Let's, you know, if you're the two that are, you know, thumbs down on it, maybe we, you know, let's write down some of our arguments and stuff to have that at our, you know, a future discussion and let's keep moving through the, through the agenda.
You want to handle the multi before we move on to the next?
Sorry, I just, I don't have it in front of me. So what was the other question, since we don't have it on screen?
To allow additional middle housing like triplexes, fourplexes, or cottage cluster.
All right, can we do a quick thumbs, thumbs up, down on that? Who's for it, thumbs up, against it, thumbs down? Emily, if you united council.
That was one easy vote.
That was about as good as it gets.
Nice and efficient. All right, we'll go to the next topic here. So the next topic was probably everybody's favorite. It's a parking. So we do have to, we can't allow, we can't require a higher amount of minimum parking for a duplex than a single family resident, residence. But we can affect the, like the design of it. So it's just a quick graphic for side by side parking versus tandem, so we know what we're talking about. So again, House Bill 2001 does not allow a city to require more off-street parking spaces for duplex than a single family residence. So the maximum number of off-street parking spaces for duplex is two total, not two per unit, which is what we currently have it in the code. But we can require that the spaces are side by side and not tandem. The planning commission didn't make any recommendations regarding parking layout. And we did get preliminary feedback from Counselor Hockinson, who indicated he is concerned about the long-term viability of tandem parking because of increases in electric vehicles and the need for charging stations.
Counselor Smallwood?
Yeah, so I, we could probably just go, you could do your thumbs up if you wanted to. I just wanted to, I'm not in favor of tandem parking, and here's why. People don't use it. So that second car will park in the street guaranteed 99% of the time, and that's where they'll park. So we're, yeah, no tandem. So, yeah, because that second car will park in the street. So side by side is the way to go. It's the only way you're going to get people to utilize those two parking spaces.
Thank you, Counselor Walker?
What she said, because there's going to be all sorts of arguments about trying to get your neighbor to move their car so you can go to work.
So I'll start just throwing out, I'm going to you, Counselor Exner, but you guys, come on, you know, it sounds like we're all feeling the same way.
Yeah, it's a lower value to the property. It's much less preferred for to have double.
All right, so thumbs up if you like the side by side parking. Now, you want the side by side parking, Don? Yep, and then thumbs, yeah, so we, and then thumbs down, right on the, what was the word, tandem, the one? Let's go. All right, all right. Cool. All right, moving forward.
Been a long. Okay, so topic for increasing the square footage of ADUs. So it's not required by House Bill 2001, but we did initially recommend increasing the maximum square footage of an ADU from 600 to 800 square feet, which might indirectly support House Bill 2001 by encouraging more people to build ADUs. The planning commission concurred with that recommendation and recommended increasing the maximum square footage as well. And we did receive preliminary feedback from Counselor Walker indicating she's not in favor of increasing the maximum square footage of an ADU from 600 to 800 square feet.
All right, Counselor Hockinson?
Just a clarifying question. Why 800 and not 825 or 900 or 730 or something else?
Yeah, it's, I'll clarify that. It's just totally arbitrary, just like 600 is. So there are a lot of things in the code, as you guys can all recognize, when you're talking about numbers. If you're talking about distances for like parking, it's not arbitrary because we base that off of vehicle size. But a lot of the other distances are arbitrary or numbers.
I guess Kelly, where I was looking for, are other communities increasing to 800? Does our 600 match up with others? I was just curious how that fits.
The great question. I don't have an answer for that, but what I can tell you is almost everybody that's coming in with an ADU request over the last five years have asked for more than 600. So if you go back and look, a lot of them, we've given adjustments up to like seven or 720 or even a little larger. There has been a few though, under, or under 600. So I won't say it's been everyone, so.
Counselor Pete Sol?
Yeah, I'd be in favor for it to be 800 versus 600. I think that gives some more flexibility, also some flexibility in people that want to build them at that larger. And I could think it has a little bit more value to that lot and that house as well as the community by having it a little bit larger in size. I look at those as, you know, more of like the mother in laws types of quarters and those type of things that might be part of it. And if I were to do one, I would want a larger one myself. So I would think others people would as well, so.
And I'll go to you, Counselor Exner, but I think that's essentially the question though, right? Is, is if that's what people want, that's what they're going to build. And so if you don't like it, then, you know, do we want to put together a code that encourages it? Counselor Exner?
Yeah, I'm, I'm duplicative of what Jeremy was talking about, other than the flexibility. If I want to do 600, I can do, if I want 800, I can. I've had people come to me both ways with thinking about adding on to their house and wondering what's their mother in law or other kids or, you know, those kinds of things. But I think the flexibility issue gives it for me. So I would, I would say 800 makes some sense, as long as it fits with the setbacks and the rest.
Thank you. Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I think the, you know, if this thing was a part of the garage, or I know they're doing, they're doing some ADUs over there in Bornstedt, by Bornstedt Park, there's quite a few units that getting built over there that have ADUs. And, and they're actually in the basement. Is that right, Kelly? They're on the ground floor or something?
Yeah, and that's, and that's actually the ones that I was just thinking are under 600 square feet.
Yeah, and you know, yeah, so where they're being, you know, part of the, the original, you know, the main house or the garage or something like that. I could see going to 800 feet on that. Having a standalone unit, there's quite a few apartments that I've lived in and my family's lived in that are 800 square feet with two bedrooms. And that's where you kind of get into that, you know, the, the more you've got, you know, two units on the lot. So, you know, I don't feel strongly about it, but I kind of, you know, again, tend to want to discourage these, you know, multiple units on one single family residential lot, so.
All right, okay, Counselor Hockinson, then we'll go to a thumbs up. Are you done? Okay.
No, I was just going to say that I, I think 800 opens the door. I think it is into that two bedroom apartment. And based on what you told me, Kelly, I would be very supportive of something less than that, increase over 600, but less than 800, maybe even a 750. Just that psychological, it's not 800, I think might be very important.
All right, okay, I'm going to do two things here. Thumbs up if you're good with 750, and then I'm going to do thumbs up if you're good with 800, okay? So if, this is assuming we're proceeding, which I'm feeling like we will. So if you're good at eight, if you're good at 750, give me a thumbs up.
But that's a hard one to, if you're going to vote for the next one, and if you vote for the first one.
A, a vote for, for voted against it, right? And then what about 800? Okay. All right, so Counselor Sheldon, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Are you opposed to moving forward, or is this a question of square footage for you?
No, I'm sorry, so I'm opposed, but my question was also, and maybe I feel like it's coming up. Did we already discuss ADUs in association with duplexes, or is that coming up? He said, I'm sorry, I'm kind of tired tonight.
We already did that one, I believe.
We did that one, yeah.
And so we said no, no ADUs on duplexes, correct?
Correct, correct.
That's why I just want to make sure I was tracking the right thing.
Anybody else want to speak? So what we want to do, we want to go forth with 800 feet, 750?
I'm concerned because I've heard that 600 is the limit. We've already granted variances above that. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about throwing 800. What's the variance?
Do, do we want to just keep it at 600?
I think there is also the limitations on the property as well, you know, size and setbacks as well. So, you know, I kind of look at that or think of that as well.
All for just keeping it at 600 square feet. Give me a thumbs up. How do we want to proceed, guys?
All right, let's do the 750 one.
800, then work your way down.
That's what we did. So, all right, so if you want 800, thumbs up. Okay, 750, thumbs up. Jeremy doesn't care.
Well, I want, I want it bigger than a 600 square feet. I guess that's where it was, if it's one or the other.
All right, do I hear?
700.
Can I offer something?
Go away, I could go long for 700.
Okay, all right. And then Kelly, what do you want to offer?
It, under the current code of 600 square feet, the biggest ones we've ever allowed is with a type two adjustment, and that puts it at 720. So 720 would get you to exactly the largest size we could allow right now through an adjustment process. It is a good point, I forget what councillor made it, maybe councillor Hockinson. That is, if you go to 720, then somebody could come through with a request to go larger through an adjustment proceeding, but also if you guys went to 720 and gave staff direction that we should not grant many adjustments to, we would just keep them at 720, so. That's what I was going to offer.
Is everyone feeling pretty good at 720?
Sure.
All right, 720, passes. All right.
All right. So this next one is a little tricky. It came out of a pre-application meeting we have, so kind of a very specific thing that came up while we're also working on these House Bill 2001 changes. And this is, so we, we got a pre-application for a single-family residence that was converting to a duplex, and it happened to be located on a transit street. And currently our code requires houses on transit streets to face the transit street and to have a direct pedestrian connection to it. So with this conversion, we would have, we would have required the second unit to then face the transit street. But because it's on a flag law, it kind of made a little less sense. And also because of House Bill 2001, we couldn't have actually required the conversion of the single-family to the duplex to then have to meet that. So essentially, so conversion of a single, a single-family to a duplex on a flag lot on a transit street would normally trigger the requirements of 1782. So again, that means the front door would have to orient towards the transit street and then have a direct pedestrian connection to the sidewalk. But that would not be in compliance with House Bill 2001. So that we've changed, but at the same time, we proposed also exempting single-family residences and duplexes, so not a conversion, but just a new single-family residence or a new duplex from those standards on the flag lots specifically where the flag is on a transit street and there's not a second transit street. Just based on the reasoning that it doesn't really make as much sense for the front door to orient to the transit street when the transit street is down the flag, it would just kind of increase unnecessary impervious surface and have potential stormwater issues. Planning Commission just recommended going with the staff recommendation of exempting all three of those scenarios.
Whoa.
It's, let me just say, it's very confusing. It even took Emily and I a lot of thinking. Okay, never mind, I don't need to say anything more.
Just, yeah, thumbs up, we're all good, moving on.
All right, can't take notes fast enough.
Last one's easy, all thumbs up.
Yeah, it just said yes.
Yes.
All right, so natural hazard considerations. So House Bill 2001 does have an exception to the middle housing requirements for areas subject to natural hazards, which includes flood hazard and other hazards. So we have one chapter, that's chapter 1760, which is our flood and slope hazard overlay. And so we, we actually are not required to modify that chapter, provided that the ordinance we adopt includes findings related to, to the hazard. And we are not recommending that we broaden the permitted uses in the FSH overlay. And so we're recommending not including chapter 1760 modifications as part of the House Bill 2001 consideration. And this exemption was identified after the planning commission hearing, so they didn't make a recommendation.
Okay. We, we all got thumbs up, Emily.
Got it. All right, and the last one is the parks fee and lieu considerations. So House Bill 2001 requires government, local governments to consider ways to increase the affordability of middle housing, which includes considerations related to system development charges, property exemptions and construction taxes. But it does not require the cities to adopt the policies at this time. In the future, we may have to, but as part of House, House Bill 2001, we do not have to. But currently, the, the calculation for the city's land component portion of the parks SDC, which includes the fee and lieu option, is contained in the development code in chapter 1786. We do need to clarify this, the table in chapter 1786, one way or another, regardless. We, we did propose a total persons per unit of two for each duplex dwelling, dwelling unit in terms of calculating required parkland dedication, so that the total for the duplex would be four. In comparison, a single-family residence is three. That was sort of to, to address that a duplex may have slightly less impact on, on the parks. And so it would end up being more than a single-family residence, but less than double that. The planning commission didn't review the proposed code changes because we identified this as needing to be changed after the planning commission hearing. And we did get preliminary feedback at the last meeting that council's not in favor of reducing the persons per unit for each unit of a duplex and would want to keep it at three rather than two.
We're voting.
All right.
I think Kelly had a comment.
Kelly?
Yeah, that, we, we assumed you would vote that way, so we'll just leave it at three, like the single-family home. I just want to be very clear that, well, we are still going to modify the table, just so it's clear and objective that duplexes also get charged the three, because I don't want somebody to argue later on that duplexes don't get charged anything because they're not in the table officially. The only other thing I wanted to point out is Emily kind of already mentioned in her summary there is that in the future, we might be forced to reduce it for duplexes, but we can just wait until that happens through state statute if we want.
Great, thank you.
All right, so that, that was all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the staff recap. So is there discussion before, remember, we're continuing this to a future meeting, so there will be time for future discussion. Is there any further discussion for tonight? All right, great. I would like to get a motion to continue the public hearing to May 17th.
I moved that we extend the public hearing until May 17th.
Is there a second? I see a second from councillor Walker. So we have a motion from councillor Exner to extend the public hearing to May 17th, 2021. A second from councillor Walker. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, nay or thumbs down? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. You remove that from.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily. Great job tonight. That was a very helpful presentation. Okay, so with that, let's go to ordinance 2021-10. Jordan, who's introducing this to us tonight?
Mr. Prady, she's all yours.
All right, Jeff.
Councillor, this, this might be the shortest and simplest ordinance I've ever had to deal with. Earlier tonight on the consent agenda, you established the Public Art Advisory Board. And as such, Title 18 of the Sandy Municipal Code is now essentially moot. So what this ordinance would do is repeal Title 18, which dealt with the previous arts commission. And as a matter of process, mayor, if you agree, we do usually provide an opportunity to accept comment on an ordinance.
So let's go ahead and do that now. Let's go to public comment. For all those participating online, please click the raised hand button if you'd like to offer public comment. If you're participating via telephone, please dial star nine. You'll be provided three minutes, and we'd ask that you provide your name and address for the record. Jeff?
Okay, mayor, so I'll just look for any raised hands. And I do not see any raised hands, mayor, so staff does recommend approval of the first reading of this ordinance tonight.
All right, I'd love to, any discussions fine, but I love a motion.
I moved that we approved the first reading of ordinance 2021-10.
All right, we have a motion.
For me to have a read.
Which I could provide, mayor.
Please, please read it, Jeff. Yeah, I never, I always screw this one up. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is ordinance 2021-10, an ordinance repealing Title 18 of the Sandy Municipal Code.
Still move.
And do I have a second? Yes, all right, so we have a motion by councillor Exner, a second by councillor Smallwood. All those in favor of adopting the first reading, please signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, nay or a thumbs down? All right, motion carries. Jeff, can we go to a second reading?
Yes, this is ordinance 2021-10, an ordinance repealing Title 18 of the Sandy Municipal Code.
Do we have a motion to adopt the second reading? That one by councillor Sheldon, is there a second? By councillor Exner. So we have a motion by councillor Sheldon, a second by councillor Exner to adopt the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Great, nay, or a thumbs down? All right, motion carries. Thank you so much, Jeff, appreciate that. Let's move on to new business, proposed pool reopening task force. Jordan, do you want to say some words before we turn it over to councillor Hockinson, or maybe it's Jeff?
This was, this is councillor Hockinson's request to add this to the agenda, the mayor kindly obliged. And so Jeff did a brief cover report, but I think you see in the, in the packet tonight, if you had a chance to look at that. Councillor Hockinson put together some bylaws and explanation of what this committee, or this, I should say, task force now will be doing. So councillor, she's all yours.
So councillor, I'm going to you for your presentation. I just want to give you, one thing I would like to hear though is, is why the focus on just the pool and not just in the community campus is kind of a broader deal in this committee, but looking forward to hearing your thoughts and why you want us to go this direction. Thank you.
Thanks, mayor. So Carl, Kathleen and myself, as part of the pool committee, we've been meeting, but really our focus is that broader community campus and trying to figure out all the various pieces of which, depending on how you slice and dice it, could be 14, 15 different significant efforts from pump tracks to, to trails, to other improvements, new pools, gems and so forth. The, the interest here is with Tanya leaving, we really want to make sure we have the opportunity to get the information that she's collected over her tenure related to the costs associated with the current pool, the current situation and things like that. And, and so that's driving the urgency. We expect that we would have many of these sort of task force looking at many, all of these, or maybe many of these various parts that could contribute to community campus. So this isn't saying that our committee says we should reopen the pool, but we want to put the pieces in place so that we understand the information, so that the council can make an informed decision. The second thing driving it is really the, the potential for stimulus money or infrastructure money that may come available. And the idea that we need to have a plan, we need to have things to where we could spend money, should it come available. It will also help, even as we discussed in the Urban Renewal Board today, as we look at budgets and things like that, to kind of have a better flavor, a better understanding of the cost and the options that are in front of us. We do have a group of citizens that are meeting independently to gather some of this information, creating a task force, allowing them to apply for. And I'm assuming some of them would probably get appointed to this task force. Will help them get some, tap into the, the staff help, get that information from Tanya and hopefully, hopefully expedite the preparation of a recommendation. And from the notes, it's really kind of a broad recommendation. It's how should, what it's, what's the physical state of the pool, what would it cost to get it open, but also the operating model, what should the pool offer in terms of services? So it's very broad. It, it looks at the cost, it looks at the, the, the revenue opportunities based off, you know, the trade-offs of this programs or that program. So it, it's very broad, deliberate, but that, that's really reflecting the interest of the folks that I've been meeting with under Grant Hable up to now anyway. So that's kind of theirs. Does that explain things, mayor?
Yeah, and, and I'll go to councillor Smallwood. One quick question though, is there opposition to, because I'm wondering if maybe some of my feelings is just based on the name. Because I'm one that's not necessarily opposed to reopening this pool, but I'm also not willing to close the door on maybe this isn't the right spot for the pool, we need a, well, somewhere else, right, so.
Can I address that?
Yeah.
So we, we have a separate line item for building a new pool. And we expect to put similar effort into the creation of a new pool. And we may end up with one or the other. We may end up with a staggered do one and then the other kind of recommendation ultimately. As a committee, we haven't leaned or tipped our hat one way or the other. We're just exploring, what could we do? What's the option? Is it feasible?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Pete's all.
Yeah, I guess I had the same thing. It should just be called the Pool Task Force versus the Reopening Task Force was my, my, I think Stan made it clear there, just the name is maybe of a concern. The other thing would be is, is there a total of five members on it? The way I read it, I only see three members can be city council and two members from the city staff, but no more than 40. But I don't see a number of total people on, that can be part of this committee. Is it seven or? Oh, it's 10, okay, and.
It's Article 3, councillor Pete's. In the bylaws.
I, that's where, that's where I was reading. I don't see, I, I miss, must be.
The first sentence says the task force is comprised of.
Oh, 10 seats, okay, you spelled it out versus. Anyway, my fault on that, but those are my only comments, so. I love, I love having the task force, don't get me wrong. I just, the name of it was of a concern to me, that's all.
I'll just address, can I address those, that comment about the number? I made a suggestion that instead of the 40%, that we only have two, no more than two people outside, because if you got 10 people and three couns, three are counselors and two are staff people, then you've got five residents. And if four of those people can be outside, you know, 40, 40% is four people and, you know, so for the, four of the five could be outside of the city. And so I want to change, I would make, be making a recommendation to change that from 40% to no more than two people, similar to our other boards. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Smallwood, did you, you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess I have, I have a couple, well, I'll start with this. So there was a significant effort made over the last two years with the previous council as far as going out for two surveys, hiring a professional consultant, the taxpayer dollars went into mail-out surveys, and a lot of this information already came back as far as what people were willing and not willing to pay for. So I guess, I guess, Don, my question is, 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 are we just, are we redoing stuff to redo stuff? Or are we taking that information and utilizing that information, or what are we doing?
No, good, good point. I would expect a lot of that information, some of the survey information to be used, especially when developing programs. One of the things I would draw short on this particular committee or task force is I wouldn't want them exploring the funding mechanism, because while I want them to explore the cost, whether we roll this into a broader community campus, recreational district or other things, is actually a much bigger subject, and I, I think that belongs beyond this. The reason I didn't call this the reopen the pool or build a new pool is, is that building a new pool definitely feeds into that alternate funding mechanism that we have to put into place. And I was really thinking that this task force would be pretty short in duration. I'm not, I don't know what the time is, but I wouldn't expect it to go years. I would expect to go months, maybe up to a year, you know. Whereas a new pool might be a much longer term, maybe potentially do a longer term kind of investigation, yeah.
And then, and then my, my second question, and then I'm done. So my second question is, if, if the object is to not, well, let's say the outcome determines that, hey, not this pool. I guess I'm looking for a timeline. Because while, while we just sit on this building here at the community campus, it's just using up taxpayers' money to sit there vacant arbitrarily. And so, you know, I, I guess I'd like a resolution on that building sooner than later as far as what we're doing, so that we can, if, if we're not going to use that pool and develop that pool, that, that, you know, we stop just putting taxpayers' money to it every month.
Yes, and that's part of the urgency of seeing, is there a feasible plan to reopen it and use it now from the pool perspective? But let's broaden that discussion to the whole middle school and beyond. We would like to come back to the council, the three of us would like to come back to the council as soon as, two weeks, four weeks, as soon as we get on the agenda, get like 15 minutes. And we'd like to talk over those other work streams that we see and get council feedback and prioritization and direction as to what you think we should focus on next.
Councillor Exner.
Yeah, you're starting to hear some of the conversation that the three of us have had over the last month or so. And, and for me, it, it becomes a matter of, how much do you think you can bite off in, in this short period of time? We really need to, and I think the original intent was. We really need to, and I think the original intent was the pool, try to figure out where we are that way. But when you start opening up that picture, you start thinking about all the other little things that could influence the pool. That relate to the rest of the the campus. And I think to take on the entire campus, boy, that becomes a real. Gobbler of all kinds of time. And I'm not sure that we all would have the time to go after the entire campus at this point. So as much as I would love to be able to look at the bigger picture of things, I kind of am in the mode with. The reason why we got here is that the pool is probably as big a piece of meat to be able to take on as it probably could at this point. If you think you want to have us take a look like Don is talking about in a few weeks to a month or something, come back and say, take on the entire show. We need to talk about how to do that because there's a lot of stuff there that we would probably do an awful lot of work for. So I think the focus is better off at the quite pool, even if we talk about if it's a new pool and put someplace else. So that's why we're here.
Thank you. Counselor Walker.
We we actually have a Google Drive that we've been kind of putting some documents together. The way I kind of see it, you know, kind of going back to those goal setting sessions and having a little PTSD with all that. But the, you know, kind of those visionings boards, the way I see it is kind of there's there's the pool. And then there's the, you know, the recreation services and the community slash senior services and the park there. And the economic development that we want to do there. And so there's kind of all these kind of overlapping bubbles that I see. And so I really think that we're gonna, if I, you know, if I was, you know, king, I would probably just kind of say. We're going to have some multiple task force looking at those different bubbles. How can we do, you know, maximize the economic development at this height? How can we, you know, again, looking at the proposal for the park stuff? And and, you know, we've got conceptual plans, but again, you know, what are the funding mechanisms to get that stuff built and things like that? Kind of diving in a little bit deeper. And doing the same thing for kind of the community center rec program and 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 senior services and how, you know, what's the scope of that? I think there's some additional stuff that needs to be done a little bit on that. But again, kind of, so so big picture, there's kind of some additional efforts out there that we're going to need to be getting on here pretty quick. But the first priority was the pool. And so we kind of thought we'd start with that and then build these additional ones. And then at some point, you're going to have, you know, you might have some of these specialties, like the parks board and stuff is going to be big on the car, the park part of that. But then, you know, at some point, you may end up with a task force that kind of, you know, brings in, you know, a few people from each of those things. And you have kind of that bigger conglomeration of folks kind of looking at the big picture. But again, not spending a lot of time, but really kind of trying to get from kind of conceptual stuff down to more specifics. Some more realistic options that I don't think we got when we had that first plan.
Agree with that. Alright, so with that, I see Counselor Pete Sol, but I am, I am kind of hearing a consensus to move forward with the pool. Task force with it, I I would love for it to be called that, the Pool Task Force, not necessarily the the Pool Reopening. Task force, just because of some of the issues that we had talked about. Counselor Pete Sol.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion, actually, if we're okay with that. And I was going to suggest that similar thing, but call it the Pool Explorer. Exploration, I can't say exploration task force.
I'm all about exploratory committee.
Exploratory committee task force, if that's okay with everybody else. I don't want to step on anybody's toes. But I thought, I don't know, I don't come up with some good names rarely, so. But and then also to Kathleen's point, no more than two people outside of the city limits to coincide with all the other task force that we do have on that. That's my motion.
Can I qualify that?
Sure.
That I'm that we keep it just how Jeremy said, but that the initial focus that we're going to provide this task force is as written. Which is, and then we can always, as a council, modify it to to expand it.
Yeah, and and remember, Counselor, you're chairing the committee, right? So, I mean, you you guys can tackle those things as you as you see fit.
And I haven't, I don't know if I'm the right person to chair it, or we should go with.
Okay, well, whatever, but I mean, the committee. Process. My my overall point is, whether it's you or somebody else, the committee can figure out their own process. Yeah. Yeah, Jeff.
Just a quick question, Counselor Pete Sol, I know you made the motion. So is it, do we want two people or twenty percent? So if if not, all the seats are filled, in other words. Okay.
Make it easy and to.
To.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a second? See a second. There's a motion by Counselor Pete Sol and a second by Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying I or give me a thumbs up. I.
Hi.
Oppose, and they are thumbs down. Alright, good. Guaranteed maximum price proposal for basin eight.
We got one, we got one more thing. On that, they have their recommendation. I'll make the motion, identify three counselor members to serve on the interview panel. I won't make a motion, but that was the thing that I've talked about.
Shouldn't it be Don, Kathleen and Carl?
I was assuming so, but I just want to make sure we.
Yeah, and everybody go with just keeping those three doing this project. Okay, sweet. Yeah, good eye, Jeremy. I appreciate that. Alright, next item, guaranteed maximum price proposal for basin eight inflow and infiltration rehabilitation project.
Mike Walker, oh, Mike's here. There's his camera. I'll do a quick introduction. You'll see a price tag in here. This is our first GMP. For our inflow and infiltration project for doing the improvements to our collection system. So we are happy and eager to start getting this work done. This is the result of a negotiation with Oxbow Construction. That the council approved the contract with back in November. So they've done the phase one work on doing the inspections and doing the TVing of the lines. Final design was done and then they submitted their price, their GMP for doing the remedies in the in the collection system for basin eight. So pretty exciting to have this in front of council because we're starting to spend real dollars now on this project. I will stop speaking now, hand it over to Mike, finish the staff report. But just wanted to express my excitement that now we're starting to move and we're going to see some construction activity this spring and summer.
Yeah, that's a good point that Jordan makes. This is also probably going to be the most visible of the projects we're doing, even though a lot of it's under the ground. But there will be crews out in the streets, in the neighborhoods, you know, relining pipe, there'll be door hangers. People get a notice saying mine's going to be replaced, those kinds of things. And so this will be the most visible evidence of the work that we're doing with the sewer system in general and the collection system in particular. The work at the treatment plant will also start soon, once the final design is completed on the GMP packages. But you know, that's not a big tourist attraction, as you know, and so people won't see that. But we'll still do a good job trying to keep people up to speed on what's happening. Jeff is already working on newsletter articles for these projects. And so even though some of it won't be very visible, we do intend to have a a a lot of presence on the city's website and other platforms. So that people can see where this money is going. And so I should point out that on the GMP, the the maximum amount. Is five point four million. There's still some contingency we have to negotiate. The contractor has elected to self perform some work, which actually dropped the price a little bit. So it will not exceed five point four million, and we're still going back and forth and finalizing some of these prices. We're very close. But it will not be, it will be, it will be less than five point four million and it cannot be more. So we would recommend that the council approve the authorize the city manager to negotiate a GMP. With Oxbow Construction for the basin eight rehab project.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion by council or questions? Otherwise, I did entertain, oh, Counselor Exner.
I'm trying to get my stupid hand get up, like.
You're good, go.
The biggest word I can say is go, go, go. The other thing too is really need to do good solid work on getting folks to know what's going on. We've got lots of projects happening in in this basin eight, basically, with all the sidewalks and the other work that's happening. See lots of cars and trucks, people doing things that are happening. I get a lot of questions about what's going on. It's hard to tell which project is going to the next. So let's let's do a good job about getting people to understand what's going out there. I give you a letter to everybody. I don't know if you can do emails to the folks that are in basin eight and two, is that right? We're doing both, but both are just one.
At basin eight will be done later. That's still in the kind of the final design stages. And once the design is complete, then there'll be another negotiation just like this for guaranteed maximum price. But yeah, that's our intent. We know all the sites where the work is taking place. We're going to send out letters to everybody. Contractors will put out door hangers, you know, shortly before the work happens. So yeah, we do intend to get to a big push with a public conversation on this.
I I know a lot of people that are looking at us from the outside are also saying, go fast if you can, get that ready and completed before the winter storms happen.
Alright, thank you. Counselor Hokinson.
Two points. First is, I've mentioned on a couple of meetings that we need to have a wastewater PR plan. In place and Jordan, I don't know if you need a motion from the full council to give you direction on that. But it's, we're already behind. We need it now. I think it's great, Jeff's writing letters, but I think we need a orchestrated PR plan around that.
Which, not to interject, I apologize, on that topic, Jordan, I mean, that we we had budgeted in the facilities plan, correct? Some money for for public relations.
Yeah, and I actually had a meeting with the firm that's been assessing assisting us on this. And there we're going to start pushing more and try to get ahead, back ahead of communication around the outfall in particular and and Roslin Lake. And you know, our intent was with the next RFP for the permitting, there'd be a lot of outreach with that with that community. But, you know, this last presentation, you know, obviously got the word out with the the neighborhood groups in the area and around Roslin Lake. And the proposed outfall. So we are, you know, we're working on getting that information out, working on making those connections with the Bull Run CPO. And getting the watershed back in in contact with us, so we can have these open houses and chance to hear these concerns and and communicate. But so Barney Worth has been helping us with the the alternatives discharge analysis. We have some remaining budget that we can use out of the Murray Smith budget. Their work is done now. So that's that's the, I think, the easiest opportunity to have this gap in between our next phase. When there's really going to be a much more robust program with, you know, a fifty million dollar project for the MBR and outfall and everything. Because we need that. I agree. We need the help right now on communications with this project.
And I feel like you had two items, Don. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to offer additional, I I think that's great, Jordan. I agree with all those things, but what I'm asking for, I think, is different. I think I think we're talking past each other a little bit. What I'm looking at is the story, the the things that would be on our site for people to find. Or the things that we as counselors or others can take with us when we go to talk to people. Not just planned targeted events where you or other experts go and and pitch our story. I think that's critical. You got to do that, but I'm talking in addition. And and so I don't think it's a big dollar item, but it's time and effort and the right people to help craft those materials.
Yeah, absolutely agree. They helped us before with talking points and fact sheets and all the things that we can equip you with. And it would be working on it, putting together a plan too, and you guys can see that on the different parties that we're going to engage, at what level, what kind of information. We've already been starting to build up our website a lot more with FAQs and posting all the information and data too.
Thanks. So with that, Mayor, I moved authorize the city manager to negotiate a a GMP not to exceed five point four million. And sign a contract with Oxbow Construction for the basin eight inflow and infiltration reduction project.
See a motion by Counselor Hokinson and a second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying I or provide me a thumbs up. I oppose, and they are a thumbs down. Motion carries. Moving forward to item ten point three hundred new business, city manager authority delegation for existing wastewater treatment plant improvements project.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take this one and Mike and.
Make your case, Jordan. Why do we give it to you?
Well, honestly, the preferred process would be we won't have to use this. The, as as Counselor Exner said, we want to go. And one of the issues that we may find with the wastewater treatment plant work with Slaton is a lot of the work is around procuring equipment. That they have to fabricate and build and ship out to the city to put in new filters and and other things associated with the plant improvements. And and a lot of this work is also going to be done. This is another construction manager, general contractor. Project delivery approach, and there'll be multiple GMPs associated with not just the work, but these procurement packages. Our concern is that even two week lag or maybe a three week in between city council meetings can can put us off schedule. I mean, every day is actually pretty critical on this project in particular, more than the collection system work. Schedule is really tight. We're trying to, you know, get this stuff done before the wet weather season. And the discharge back into Tocco Creek starts. So like I said, every day is actually pretty critical on this project. So our our, you know, ask here is that as these things come up and we need to get a GMP authorized. That would be within within the the overall budgets. We're not asking, you know, council to give me authority to increase the budget. But it would be within that five point nine estimate that we'd be able to do these quick procurements to get things on schedule or keep things on schedule. Like I said, hopefully we don't have to use this, but you know, we can anticipate something might come up on a Tuesday right after a council meeting. And rather than making you guys come back and meet that we can, you can give me the authority to do that. The other thing that we talked about with the Oversight Committee was involving them or informing them of this. So sort of delegating a little authority to Counselor Hokinson and Counselor Exner on sharing that information and saying, here's what the procurement is. Thumbs up, thumbs down, and a quick check in with them. So that's that's the ask. I don't have a sense on what, how much of amounts we're actually talking about at this point. Like I said, it's not going to be any, you know, won't be over that five point million estimate. You'll still see the bulk of the GMPs. But this might be, you know, one of those helpful things that we can do to keep this project moving on on schedule.
Counselor Hokinson.
Thanks. We're entering a time in the economy right now where futures pricing on raw materials like steel, timber and other things are going through the roof. Where we're seeing ten to twenty percent increases in some cases overnight. I think I I'm a big fan of transparency and my preference would be that everything came, you know, in a very transparent manner. But I think we're at a point in time where if we want to contain our cost, we need to give this sort of authority to to Jordan. And then watch and use after the fact. Watchdog efforts as opposed to before the fact.
I agree. Counselor Exner.
There it is. Due to what Don said, the only thing I would add is that not only is it raw materials, it's contractors. It's tough to get anybody to respond to projects right now. And if we can get people to jump in. We should just go after it and do as much as we can with the watchdog committee. And I guess let those of us who are on that watchdog committee kind of look at that. When there is something that really looks troubling, we'll bring it back to the main council. And but in the meantime, let's move forward.
Alright, I'm hearing a consensus. If we can get to a motion, Counselor Pete Sol.
I moved to authorize the city manager to negotiate and approve GMP agreements and acquire equipment with long lead times for the existing water treatment. Plant condition assessment improvement project in cases where it may not be possible to place an item before the council for approval. On the regular meeting schedule, authority not to exceed five point nine million estimate for the proposed work.
Some motions or a second. It's motion by Counselor Pete Sol, the second by Counselor Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying I or provide me a thumbs up. I oppose, and they are a thumbs down. Motion carries. Moving forward, report from the city manager, Jordan.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick things first. I think we are still looking for a library advisory advisory board interview committees. Is that right? Okay, so we need some volunteers for that, which I think are coming up right around the corner. Counselor Walker, I think you're muted, but you are the you are the liaison to the library board.
Yeah, you keep stealing my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other volunteers to join the library advisory interview committee? I'll do it. Alright, me and Rich, we're in.
Thank you. Alright, see Jeff taking notes. Budget committee meetings are coming up, starting next week. We're gonna, we're wrapping up the budgets. You know, the production is. wrapping up uh the budgets. Uh you know, the production um is uh taking place right now and we hope to get those out uh really soon. I I think Wednesday. Um so we'll get those budgets out. We'll have the 26 um as our first budget committee meeting and then the third and and 10th of the the follow up. So um we'll be we'll be seeing a lot of each other in the next couple of weeks uh talking about budget. Um uh and then the the main part of my report, I wanted to talk about um the opportunity for testimony coming up. Uh with the joint committee on Ways and Means, uh they reached out um uh last week about this opportunity. They're going district to district as part of the road show, uh virtual road show. Um it's 5:30 on Wednesday. Uh we've drafted a two minute that we think it's about two minutes long to meet within the requirements for testimony. And really, it's a chance for us to put our high priority projects into the record uh for state funding. Um you remember a couple of weeks ago, there was that brainstorming blitz that we uh that um representative Williams and Senator Thompson uh asked us to submit our ideas. Um and and we prioritized uh that list of projects. So the letter that we drafted in our testimony um kind of mirrored that. Um I think there's a lot of talk about funding uh from the state uh going to districts this year, which is great for us. We have a lot of needs, obviously. I think our our task is to try to prioritize and then uh and also understand that there's other opportunities that may be coming down uh with infrastructure spending, especially for water and sewer. Um that may be coming from the federal government. And so um I think, you know, in our testimony, we we identify those, you know, five priorities. The first obviously is still wastewater, um you know, given the price tag on that, but there's a lot of other good projects too. Um you know, be in a perfect world, we would get uh funding for for a lot of those or at least.
You said perfect world, Jordan. You get all of them, right?
Let's get them all. Let's get them all. Um but I think, you know, we definitely have um built some relationships with our state representatives and even our federal delegation that supported us in our WFI application. So we have our foot in the door. They're aware of these projects on the wastewater. We refunded the prior legislative session of $500,000. So we have that opportunity to really leverage those funds and say, you know, it's a shovel ready project, you know, we just you guys just adopted a a passage GMP tonight where we're going to start breaking ground. So it is shovel ready as it can get. Same with 362nd. That's another great example for shovel ready project. So both for our state delegation and our federal, we have these projects that are ready to go that are infrastructure, create jobs. You know, and address uh, you know, some of the issues that we've had with rising rates. Um so um I I guess the purpose of tonight is one, get your feedback on that testimony. Uh I get the sense that it really is our opportunity just to put something into record, submit it in written and then um have that uh appearance of um support. So someone's there to to testify and get it in the record uh on Wednesday night. Um and then where it goes from there, hopefully it comes back in in cash. Um but uh I I wanted to ask if there was a volunteer or somebody from council that wanted to do the um uh wanted to testify. Um I know councillor Smallwood, I see a volunteer councillor Smallwood, um I think you testified before a couple of years ago uh and got us the 500,000. So um.
I like that. Good luck.
Yeah.
Let's keep that going. Uh councillor Exner.
I just make a comment here. It was back in with the League of Oregon City had these interviews with elections and I think one of the big comments I took away from was from was that we should be in a force of some kind. It would be helpful to have as many counselors, even if they didn't speak, attend some of these kinds of meetings as a way of showing that the council has a lot of back backing in these particular projects. That and I think that we should keep it small and focused on what we want. And I think those two projects really for me represent what our biggest needs are. And uh if we can get lots of money on either one of those or both, let's do that. But I I think we ought to stay away from having 20 or so of asks and maybe make it down to just the two or there's a third one somebody has, but I think it's important to show support from our council. So I guess I could be there and yes, nothing else to say. I'm here to support what councillor Smallwood says.
Remember some virtual meeting. That'd be great. I just letting you remind it. Yeah, it is a virtual meeting, but that that would be great to have you there. Um I I guess I'll just kind of pipe in and I was talking to Jordan about this earlier. It is part of what keeps me up at night right now is the amount of opportunity in front of us uh with with cash flow and money. I mean, we're talking, you know, we got the stimulus money, then we're talking an unprecedented infrastructure policy of the feds, largest since the Roosevelt administration. And I'm just worried that I'm so scared of us asking for money out of this pot for this project when we should have asked for it for this pot, out of this pot for this project. And now we kind of gave up our opportunity for this because we asked for it over here. And I I I just I say all that say I I would like us to have a discussion about maybe bringing on some professional help. Um uh like uh some sort of government relations, public affairs um type firm um that might be willing to help us navigate some of the federal money and the pots of money coming out um that we can apply for. Um I just uh it's just something that we talked about earlier. Um I'm afraid I just because we don't we just still get these opportunities very often, e- ever really. And I just want to make sure that we're really kind of fully taking opportunity, you know, as as a city over. So I just oh it it sounds like we we're kind of have a consensus for Lori. If not, that's fine, but say that, but feeling good about Lori going and giving that spiel, but what is the general feel of maybe, you know, get going and go in that route to some kind of lobbyists in a short term. I'm not talking long term, but just kind of while we're going through this unprecedented time. Um councillor Pete Sol.
Yeah, I have to agree. I mean, I've seen, you know, being on the council a while and and seeing what it means when you know how to walk between people um down in Salem or even in DC. Um you really know, need to know how to talk with people and you need to know where to talk and who to talk with and those type of things in it. And so I know lobbyists can get a bad rap, but there's other cities that do have that and Mark over uh Wilsonville and watching him and going, wow, you know, he's really able. It's a different type of city. Don't get me wrong. There's that, but there's, you know, people that really know how to do it versus, you know, people that have different types of jobs that are just going and asking for money and just hoping that they give it to us. Um it's kind of, you know, that aspect of it. So I'm in full support of that for the short term, right? Um because I do, I do believe we're in regardless of what anybody uh believes was gone on left or right. It doesn't matter that whether we should have this money or not, coming down to everybody across America. We have an opportunity like none other to get some of that uh for some of the biggest uh things that we've uh needed. And like you said, Stan, um there's so many different pots, you know, I watch these things, you know, broadband is a huge thing and there is just gobs of broadband like you've never seen before. Puts the other one to shame of how much money is going out there uh for our cities. But then there's the wastewater and there's the transportation, all these things that we don't have um people and staff to to know all the ins and outs of all those things, right? And so that's where a firm or something like that that could help us, I think uh would be wise in the short, short term, so.
I mean, I'll just give you an example is is we're what we're asking for wastewater, which I'm fully in support of out of the state money. But you know, we're I'm watching your voice, your vote, you know, on Sunday, a real cool guy on Sundays. Uh and Congressman DeFazio is on there talking about, you know, he's in charge of the Transportation Committee. A lot of the infrastructure is coming from. They're talking about, you know, wastewater treatment money um coming from the feds. And so I just that's one of those things that keep me up is are we asking for all this money out of the state, you know, that for wastewater when all this money is going to come out of the feds and we miss this opportunity out of the state? That's just what worries me. Um councillor Smallwood.
Yeah, I I would agree. I think I think first of all, thanks um uh for trusting me to to testify. Um but second of all, um I think I think because it is unprecedented and we we stand to get a lot of money, I I think that we owe it to the taxpayers in this community um on such a big ask like our wastewater treatment um project that we do everything in our power uh to find any amount of funding uh to reduce the uh the toll on on, you know, our residents here. So I'm I'm in favor of that in the in the short term for sure.
So Jordan, how would you like to proceed then? Uh would you like to kind of start, you know, talking to some folks and then bring something to our kind of propose something to council for us our consideration? Or do you want to have counselors kind of working with you to figure this out? I'll leave it.
Uh I think I would like to count council involved with um probably what we would want to do. Um we can informally probably solicit some proposals, given it's going to be a short term duration. Um you know, and maybe keep the contract amount in that in that um short term idea. Um but have a council, have a council, uh maybe three counselors involved, like interviewing a couple of firms, uh seeing if they're a right fit, what their experiences, their connections uh with these type of projects, you know, how they work. Uh that probably would be the fastest way to do it. Um and probably the, I don't know, I I'm just kind of thinking through. Instead of doing like an RFP or something like that, I you know, we need to move um on this stuff. So, you know, gathering up some firms that are, you know, Oregon based probably. Uh you know, there's obviously some big international firms, but I think it'd be in our benefit for for someone that uh for a firm that has that Oregon connection and understands our name.
I agree. Oregon Oregon based with a federal, a federal portfolio.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh councillor Walker.
So just to, so I understand. Um so are are you talking about hiring lobbyists? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, lobby government relations, you know, folks that but also have the resources to understand kind of what what different grants to apply for and all that kind of stuff as well. Just a lot of them do.
Yeah, and I mean, I think there's so many moving parts. I I think that's first of all, I think it's a great idea. I just, it's a timing thing too. It's kind of like, you know, paying people when everything's still up in the air and nobody knows anything is kind of not as, you know, helpful. So yeah, I just it it's kind of, it'll be interesting to see the timing on when things start getting gelled up and programs start getting, you know, actual grant grant processes start kind of formulating. I think I think that is helpful. No, I I guess I'd be curious as to what other communities have used the um lo- lobbyists and whether, you know, is that well received or, you know, or is it like the politicians that, you know, talk to the lobbyists all day? Do they just kind of, you know? I mean, I I don't have a good handle on that, maybe.
Yeah, Kathleen, what I would say to that is is um nothing, no lobbyist, no one will ever replace the us in our ability to go and sit in front of these elected leaders and advocate for our community, right? But what a lobbyist can do is tell us who we should be sitting in front of and advocating, right? And and where we should be going and advocating for those dollars. So I guess that's how I would present it is is uh I don't think it would be effective to just hire a lobbyist and then not send with them in a presentation. But I do think that they help give us guidance as to where we go. That I would also look for advice on stuff like this ask we're about to send Lori in a little bit half blind on, right? Where that lobbyist lobbyist could kind of say, listen, from what we're hearing in DC, we're going to have all kinds of money coming to local municipalities for wastewater. And we're not hearing you're going to be able to get much for a multi-generational rec center out of this package from the feds. So maybe you should take that and ask for it from the state and leave your wastewater for the feds. So just that kind of overall strategic advice, you know, is is kind of what I'm looking for along with, you know, how to navigate, you know, some of those halls in DC. My past experience, I feel like I could give a lot of that advice here in in Oregon. Um you you really do start to lose me a bit though. Um when we get to the federal level, I just haven't spent a lot of time there. Okay, uh is there three counselors that would like to participate with Jordan on this process? We're looking for. I thought that might be the case. Um so uh where I'd like to go is since councillor Smallwood's been making the ask, we'll go there, we'll go councillor Pete sold. Um I really like his experience with broadband and kind of understanding some of those. And then I'm going to go with councillor Walker because she seems to have the most questions and I I I would like to kind of um you know, see her get to a comfort level with it or not, but to kind of figure out for herself kind of what we're looking at doing here. Does that work for everybody?
Are you going to be on it, Stan?
Well, I I'm not. What I'd like to do is to talk to Jordan about it and the process kind of from the outside, but to let you guys kind of go through your own interview process for what you're looking for. I just, I think that some of my relationships there might be a little too close. Um and I would just, I'd prefer that you guys made the decision.
Okay, because I was would have stepped aside to have you on that because I think you have the most experience of us all in that field and and would have a lot of qualities and and uh more so than I I just just wanted to put that out there. I do think you're the highest qualified one in this group for that uh to be on that committee, so.
So in that regards, Dan, how much of that is the conflict? Do you think that?
It's just not a conflict. It's just you guys should know. I just want to be straightforward. I mean, I do know, I'm going to probably know know everybody that we that we interview. Um and I could certainly, I certainly am willing to participate in it. I just, you know, I just.
And that's fine. We can go with that. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to let you know how I felt too. So I appreciate.
No, I appreciate it. And then I I and that's what I mean. I I would want to make sure talking to Jordan, you know, that you know, I'd like to kind of look over the list a little bit and just make sure not to take anyone out of it, but just make sure we have a broad spectrum just from what I know about some of the different firms. But I I would kind of, I I I think like you guys have a good feel for what we want to do. All right. So is that is that the end of your report?
Thank you very much. That was great. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Um okay, uh so committee and council reports. Let's start with councillor Hockenson.
Shaking it up, man. All right. Um first of all, I just want to um commend uh the staff for adjusting in terms of how information is presented to us. I think things are getting a lot better. I think that example of going through the House Bowl 2001, whatever uh today was excellent. I think it was very well structured. So keep that up. Second of all, um just kind of a, when we did our goal setting and we were zooming, uh we had chat nabled and we were able to talk back and forth. It's a much higher communication. I wonder if we could use or figure out how to utilize chat for our work sessions, meetings. So that we could maybe get more communication going back and forth and still comply with the open meetings. I just throw that out there for consideration for Jordan, Jeff and uh legal to see if that's an option. And uh thank you guys for your support for the the uh pool exploratory committee or task force. So thanks.
Thank you. Uh I am, I am kind of shaking it up tonight. Hi, who knows who's going next? Uh let's go councillor Exner.
All right, um got a little bit involved in the bees. It seemed like that thing just blew up on me. I had a meeting with the school district and they're all excited and we're moving forward on it. I just lots and lots of things happening. People hear about it from I don't know where, called up Shelley and called up me, so.
Get stung.
What's that?
Just don't get stung.
I still think I need you to get into a bee suit and do a bee dance.
You're going to get a tattoo, Carl?
Hey, that's Shelley's deal. All right. Okay, to Don's thought, uh getting communication better. I firmly believe that face to face stuff, and I know I'm the old guy here. So I should have all the high risk, but uh I've got my vaccine, two of them. So I'm through with that. I think that one of the best ways is to do some of these hybrid meetings and getting some of that conversation happening face to face, much better, much easier to make things understandable. And I would just out of curiosity, who's got their vaccine? Am I the only one? Completed? One, two, three.
Oh, that's a HIPAA violation. Really?
Okay, I won't memorize who did it. So I think as.
Hypothetically, maybe I got half, you know?
Hypothetically, Mackenzie's been all morning trying to book us an appointment. We couldn't figure it out.
All right. So anyway, hypothetically, I think we're closer to the getting the vaccines behind us and um I know that the state of Oregon still has their limitations as such. I think it's important to are thinking about. I know Jordan and staff have looked at some possibilities for hybrids. So there may be some people who are concerned and they need to be staying in the virtual, but I for one, as the old guy with the high risk supposedly, I'm all for it. This is the message for Mike. Are you a few there, Mike Walker? Maybe Jordan, you could tell Mike if he's not there. Uh the work that we've been doing on the end of the cul-de-sac on McCormick Court. There's a big hole there with a bunch of of barricades around it. And um although I didn't go down there and take a look at it, I got a friend that looks right down into it. She said it's some I won't say the quality of kid. A kid ran through the barricade and just about broke his neck, I understand. And that hole, there's a way we can put some loose rock in there to make it so it's not quite so uh dangerous. That would really be helpful, I think. So just so.
And we can make sure that that's well marked.
Yeah. Did um and I haven't looked. Did, and I haven't looked at it, I just hear it from my friend. Did we not put a drive-through in that spot again? That seemed to me like, I just need to ask that question first. Is it not drivable now from McCormick Court into Minna?
People have been using the former ADA ramp as a driveway, but it's probably, for the average vehicle in Sandy, which is an F-350 pickup, have no problem climbing over that curb. A Prius might have a tough time, but yeah, it's still, people can get in there.
Okay, so we're still making it so that's something we can do because I know people do the work. I'm sure that we will eventually get the mountain days back up again. They'll need to get somehow into the shelters and down into the stage and all the rest. And sometimes the other sides get full up and it's still something we can, deciding to not use that anymore, I take it.
That's possible. The problem was when it was a driveway or a wide ADA ramp. We had really big rainstorms. All that water would jump over it and rush down and wash out the path. So we moved it a little farther away so that the street train was open and would collect all that water.
Okay, all right, thanks. Appreciate that. Then I think this is Jordan. I noticed that all that fine work we did and I whined and complained and you got the islands in front of John L. Scott and the other up by the Forest Service all up and ready. And now we have all that stuff going on top of it. I'm assuming you're gonna have them clean it up and put some more plants back in?
I'm glad Mike's here too cuz I've been waiting for this item to come up. I noticed the same thing. I slowly watched the grass kind of grow there. And I, I know it's really hard to maintain those things cuz of the, you know, I, I mean, we, we took out all the dirt and replaced it all. And it's amazing how grass seed travels in the Pacific Northwest. But Mike, are they under like a year contract or something to come back and clean up?
Yes, they have a one-year warranty period that ends in January of 2022. And they're gonna come out, I believe, on the 26th if we can get the ODOT land closure permit. ODOT's kind of reluctant to issue land closure permits cuz of all the other work they've got going on. But if we can get the permitted time for Monday, they'll work on the weeds that are cropping up in the islands. And then ODOT informed us last fall that some of their work would interfere with the work we're doing in the islands. So we stopped the irrigation installation and the planting short where the work is taking place. So none of the new work was affected by the ODOT ADA ramp.
Okay, thanks.
And then lastly, I don't know who did it, whether it's Jordan or Stan or whoever, Mike. I am so excited. I saw that they were starting to work on the lights on downtown Sandy to get them smart, put in the radar. Hallelujah! Well, thank you. Whoever did that, got them going. Appreciate it.
That was all you guys. I was the mayor and, you know, negotiating with ODOT.
Team effort.
Good job. Love it. I'm looking forward to seeing.
Exner, just, just pray it works, man. Just pray it works. All this fretting wasn't for nothing. Wouldn't it be horrible if we get it going and it doesn't? I just, let's hope that we see some improvement.
Hopefully, ODOT will make it work. I can't believe they put that money in there and not make it happen.
Yeah. All right, Counselor Sheldon.
I'm gonna keep it really brief. I wanted to echo what Don said about the staff reports. They're much better and much more, I feel like thorough and level-minded. And then I want to echo what Carl said about in-person meetings. I'd be really excited to look forward to doing that someday, so that's all I have.
Let's go, Counselor Walk, Small, let's go to Counselor Smallwood.
I knew you were gonna do that. I don't have any report tonight. And Rich, I feel bad for you. You look like you're about ready to fall asleep, so we'll keep it, we'll keep it brief.
I'd say it's been about two hours in the last over 24 now, so.
Yeah, man.
Getting through it, though.
You are. You're a champ. Counselor Walker.
Yeah, I did the soft cleanup this week. And I just want to say really a shout-out to Carol Cohen and her staff. On the soft cleanup, we had about 60 people. We had people from, you know, Portland, Beaverton come out. And what, I did the Sandy River Park, and I don't know if you guys ever remember those pictures of the three pickup loads that we took out of the ant farm, had to go back and get, you know, that one huge camp. And then the group from the Vista Apartments had, we had two pickup loads come out of Sandy River Park. We went down to those sites and they were perfectly clean. There was, I just expected after being in Portland and everything to, you know, just see a nightmare down there. And there was hardly anything. We found one blanket and a tarp in one spot and a bit of two mattresses and a bit of a camp in one spot. They were pretty small, not very much trash. And even the fishing hole down there at the river really was pretty well cleaned up and stuff. So we were thrilled that, you know, and it was so crazy busy down there. We probably had 30 people pass us on the trail and, and talk to us. So a great group of folks made, really made Sandy look clean. One thing that a member of the public has, it was Tamara Sedgwick kind of mentioned to me that there, an issue has come up with amount, the amount of blowdown that we've been having on the Tickle Creek Trail and the resulting fire danger from the fuel loading there. And so what I kind of told her is that I would kind of bring it up to everybody's attention and that, you know, maybe there's a, you know, you know, on the one hand, you know, it's an open natural area and there is some, you know, fire risk. You know, there's benefits and trade-offs to backing up to an open space, parks and open space. But on the other hand, there has been a significant amount of blowdown. And I think there's some middle ground in there that we could, maybe, maybe park staff could work with the ant farm on some cleanup. If, you know, we could probably get the chipper in there. So, yeah, just still keep it a natural area, but, you know, deal with some of the buildup of some of the fuels, especially the ones, you know, closest to the house. The, the library board, we're having our, my first meeting with them this Wednesday. They have two openings, one for the Hoodland Zone and one for the Sandy Zone. So if you know anybody who's interested, and they are finally finalizing their budget proposal and slowly kind of opening things up. Sarah Richardson is working with the Parks Board. And there's a Recreation Trail Program Grant, Letter of Intent that she's gonna be working on by April 30th to apply for a grant, the, for a trail that's already on our existing Sandy River Parks Master Plan that links this community campus down to the Sandy River Park. It's on our existing plan and it's also on our draft master plan. And it's about a little over a half a mile trail. This grant program only allows up to $150,000, which in grant, you know, is not a huge thing. We talked, you know, we were talking about pump tracks and things like that, but this is not the grant for that. This would give us an opportunity to kind of have a small little success with implementing this project and getting some linkage there for the, some of the people I talked to at Soft, Soft Cleanup were, lived up on Park and really wanted to see a connection from Park Street down to the park. So that's cool. The grant is actually gonna be due June 15th, but they're not gonna get the money for it if they get, are successful till like July of 2022 and it has to be done by July of 2024. So it's down the pike. The last thing I'm gonna say is that, kind of in response to Allison Chu and some of the other folks that have written in and stuff, that, you know, when we have these public uses of our, of our public clauses and stuff, I think that, you know, obviously, we, we all are understanding of, of the First Amendment rights and things like that. People have a right to gather, speak, protest, march, all those things. But I, in my opinion, I think it really is to some extent have, to have some permits associated with those just to kind of, you know, as long as these, the permits and rules are non-content-oriented, reasonable and things like that. When I hear amplified speakers four blocks away, I think that's kind of something that we can control. There's no legal definition of hate speech. The hate speech is any form of expression through which speakers intend to vilify, humiliate, incite hatred against a group or class of persons, basis of race, religion, skin color, sexual identity, gender identity and ethnicity, disability or natural origin. Hate speech is protected by our First Amendment. The courts have said that on the grounds that the First Amendment requires that government to strictly protect that road bust debate on matters of public concern, even when such debate devolves into distasteful, offensive, or hateful speech that causes others to feel grief, anger, or fear. Under current American, First American Amendment jurisprudence, hate speech can only be criminalized when it directly incites imminent criminal activity or consists of specific threats of violence targeted against a person or group. The courts have held that cities may set rules on where, when, and how public protests and other gatherings can take place as long as the rules are reasonable, content-neutral, and designed to serve legitimate concerns. Now, that's all where we legally stand. Morally, I hope we as a council and a town stand up to the individuals and groups, especially the ones that live in our community that invite these groups to kind of come to Sandy to kind of stir things up. I, I, you know, lived in Sandy 35 years and, you know, we're a town where we roll up our sleeves and help each other. I know that we have and had prejudiced people living among us in our town. I've known some of them. But Sandy's a town with very diverse political leanings and opinions. And we generally respect those opinions of each other. We may disagree, but we should not seek to publicly vilify those that thought or voted differently. And I'm really sad, saddened that these folks are inviting like-minded friends from Oregon and beyond to Sandy to stir up the poop and media, and get media attention. I'm really frustrated at seeing headlines that, that, you know, state that these folks from Sandy are going and, you know, and kind of spewing hate speech. I know they can do it legally, but I just think it gives us a bad name. And I think it does not help our business opportunities or our livability and our reputation. It's not Christian. And I think that, I think we, we as a city council need to speak up to the folks, bringing these folks and events to town to let them know our thoughts. And again, we can legally allow these gatherings to, to speak publicly in our town. But we can and should speak up morally with our voices, our wallets, and our backbones and stand against hate speech in Sandy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Ho, it started with Counselor Hopkinson tonight. I apologize. Counselor Smallwood. He already went. He didn't have a report. Are we, are we, do you, Pete Sold, I think?
Yeah, yeah, we are. I think he's going in order.
I love that you guys are like, oh, why does he always write it down? This is why.
Go around the room always the same way. So anyways, I'll be quick. We had an econ meeting and it was interesting, one of the things that came out of the econ money, we do a little go-around with people there, cuz it gives us a good taste of what's kind of going on in our, in our business community around Sandy. And that, one of the interesting ones that I'll share with you is just the one from Suburban Auto Group there. And it just goes, ties into a lot of different things we talked about tonight is, this is the lowest inventory they've ever had, they said. They've never seen it. They can't get cars. They can't get trucks. They can't get anything in there. And, you know, and we hear that all over. And I bring that up because there's an inventory supply chain, not just with cars. We, we've heard about it in the news for cars and those type of things. But, I mean, one of our biggest businesses, well-known in Sandy for, you know, almost 100 years. I don't, when I say 100 years, but, you know, probably a good 80 years or 70 years in there. Can't get cars to sell. It's, you know, that's, it's really hard on our businesses because of a supply chain issue. Well, that supply chain issue is going into all this stuff we've talked about tonight. The water, the sewer, all these different things. So we did some good decisions in, in tonight in helping speed that up. As I know from a personal experience where I work, I have tried to buy some stinking laptops that are 12 weeks out. So just that idea, there is a lot of this. And so think about that as a city because the price is just going up and up every day on some of these things that we have. So I am super excited. Been on this council, you know, I always try to get in there a long time, every meeting. But the, saying that we have all these projects shovel-ready, I just, you know, it just made me shiver because there's been so many times in this long time we've been on that we haven't had the opportunity to have shovel-ready projects. And I've seen them all go to Camby. Love Camby. Camby's a great, the people there are great. But man, they get all the shovel-ready projects. And so I'm so darn excited that we have some and we can go and say, hey, Camby's got theirs. No offense to Camby, but how about us? We have them. And I think that has to go with some of the past few years of doing a few things and getting some of our master plans done and having gone through some of these processes, which I know, you know, we have a lot of master plans and the staff are really like, you know, pinned on time on some of those things, but it's coming back around and we're gonna see the fruits of our labor on that. You know, as we talked about before, in DC, in the state, there's so many different infrastructure-type projects if you have shovel-ready. And we've missed so many in the last decade-plus because they weren't shovel-ready. The last thing, oh, two things. Tickle Creek, Kathleen, you bring up a good thing there. I know in the past about Tickle Creek and the blowdowns and everything there. In the past, when we've had fines from DEQ, we've had to, one of the fines is to help find a project in our watershed that we can do things with. And the money that we end up paying to the fine goes to that project, which a lot of times has gone to the Tickle Creek. And I don't know if that's still the case, Jordan, or not, but I think that would be a good ways of trying to do that. Or maybe Mike would know more on that. But just remember that sometimes we've been able to kind of use that money of our fines into beautifying our, our trail system that needs to be done, whether it's to pay the ant farmer or someone else, professional crew system to do that. And then the last thing was a question for maybe Mike or Jordan is, I know Northwest Natural came through, ripped up our highway, came through all that. I thought they were all done. And then, I don't know, you've all seen it at night, through the night. They're all ripping it up different points and going, do they have a hole in their pipe or whatever? But just curiosity for everybody that's asking me going, why are they redoing that again? And I have no idea. Do you have an idea of what Northwest Natural is trying to do there, back through town? Or maybe they're done already? I don't know.
The ADA work is, you know, the council approved a night work variance for that. That takes, some of that takes place at night. The gas companies finished, they have to do their final paving. And they, and ODOT may require them to do that at night.
Well, they, they actually ripped up the ground. I saw them digging it up there and putting in some additional, changing out pipe down at Kelso and right by Orient and then up by Suburban Audio. I mean, all said Northwest Natural, all their trucks, their jet vests, I mean, for, maybe about a month ago.
They were making the connections to those gas regulator stations, the little things behind the chain link fence. You know, there's one at 362nd, one at Suburban Ford. There might be one at some other spot, but that's what they were doing, yeah.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, couple of quick things. Once budget, budget season's coming up. Looking forward to that. You know, they say that you can say, see a lot about the values of a community through the budget. And I think that, that really is true and, and they're fun, right? Talking to our department heads about, you know, their hopes and dreams and what's going on with the department. It really is an exciting process to go through that I'm looking forward to. So thank you to all of our budget committee members for their service that decided to do that. The one, the one thing I'm pretty excited about is that we have our left turn permitted sign in city halls, my understanding, to go up on Proctor. So we're gonna be looking to get that sucker up and do kind of an exciting thing for that. We may coordinate it with the, what Counselor Exner mentioned earlier, with the lights through town. And, and so some pretty exciting road improvements going on. And then, you know, I think we'll be breaking ground before too long on Bell Street 362nd. So there's a lot to celebrate here in Sandy right now as far as some of our transportation priorities go. Anyone who's driven by Ria, Sandy Family Restaurant, probably notices that our pilot project is well on its way and it's starting to look really good. So looking forward to see that go up as well as some of the other projects start popping up around town. I mean, it's, it's pretty crummy, you guys, for it to be 75 on like a Thursday night and not be able to go sit under it right now. Really looking forward to those popping up all over town. I think it's gonna be something pretty special and cool for this community that helps out our business owners and this recovery quite a bit. In-meeting meetings, I'm ready to. I'm ready. And I honestly think that our council is not as effective as we could be, quite honestly, with some in-person meetings. That said, I would also like to continue to find a balance where we are doing this a little bit. Heck, I would like to see us doing this a little bit with the pandemic behind us. I just, I think we've talked about this. It provides an opportunity for people to call in and to participate from their homes. So a little bit of, you know, probably a hybrid, but more focused on in-person than hyper than this. But I would like to see this kind of maybe, or some of this technology still be part of our meetings. But I don't want anyone to be on the spot on this. So if our counselors can kind of individually reach out to Jeff and Jordan, you know, hopefully in the next week or so to kind of just have discussions about level of comfort and in-person meetings. You know, I'm open to dialogue about if it looks like it's not a very active meeting as far as public participation will go. You know, we never know, but you kind of. You know, we never know, but you kind of assume maybe it's in-person. But if we think we're going to need a lot of bodies, maybe we go virtual just because of the capacity requirements. But I'm open-minded. I just would like to see us start taking some concrete steps towards some in-person meetings. And then, you know, Counselor Walker, on some of your remarks there, I got to tell you, I, there's not really anything I disagree there with what you said. You know, I, I, obviously, we got, you know, there really is very little buts to the First Amendment. You know, First Amendment is well-protected and it should be. But, you know, we also need as a community really make sure that we're stating our values. There is one word that was used so on and it was from Sandy. And I got to tell you, you know, I've read some of the same articles that others have read. And I sure would like to get the addresses of some of the people that are speaking and acting as if they're representing our community. Because I think that we would find that the vast majority of people that are both inviting people here are not here. People that are coming in here are not from Sandy. And, you know, that's not why we we live here. You know, one of the things I was most proud of was I found someone on Twitter from kind of a political ideology that doesn't necessarily match up with mine, had come to town though and said, what a strange place. Police officers are really nice to me here. I bumped into one and he went out of his way to apologize for for bumping into me. And I thought, that's right, you know, I'm not, I'm not obviously criticizing police in other communities. But what I'm saying is, is we are a little weird here. We are a little different here. We treat people with respect and we respect differences of opinion. And and that's what we're really all about. So, you know, I, I think a lot of us are tired of some of what we see here. And we need to speak out, especially against some of those values that don't represent our city while protecting the First Amendment rights and and everything else. So I thank you for your statement tonight, Kathleen. Really appreciated it. With that, we'll go ahead and close out tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your participation and we'll see you at one here real soon, I'm sure. Good night.
Thanks, Chris, for joining us.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Rejoining tonight.